Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Scarborough Town Council Workshop for January 17th, 2018. This is an annual event that we conduct, effort to identify goals and action items for the Town Council. We had a team of outside professionals this year who helped us with our retreat recently, a week ago, very successful, and they also took on the responsibility of doing phone interviews that were half hour, forty-five minutes each, and included asking each counselor what were their goals. So, we have the process well along. We're going to work from the list that was prepared by the consultants. We have some overheads to assist us in that process, and I think we're going to see if we can find action plans and ways to measure success for accomplishing the goals that we have arrived at. There was a pretty good consensus, I think, amongst the counselors as to what the goals would be. The Town Manager will join me in moderating this. So, as typical, so I'm going to throw it to Tom Hall.
Sure. Just to be clear for members of the public here and those at home, the council had no discussion whatsoever of these goals at the retreat. All of this information, and it's unadulterated. What I'm showing you tonight is what the consultants provided us, and it was the results, at least through their lens, what they heard, and kind of synthesized different themes through the various interviews individually with you. So, you as a group are seeing this for the first time. I think you've all seen them and read them yourselves, but now you'll have a chance to talk about it. Given the work that was put into this, it does make sense to at least start with this as a conversation point. I don't know if it needs to be the totality of what you talked about, but I think it does hit some of the major milestones or signposts that have been talked about in recent years, not surprisingly, so it seems like a very logical place to start the conversation. So, I have printed handout of what I'll show you here, but again, these are verbatim what the consultants reported, and how they characterize the themes. So, first, let's just go through and identify the themes that, again, this is through the lens of the consultants. First thing, under the heading of Finance, Taxes and Budget. We'll come back to that for some. For the boss to help clarify that. And I'd like to guess there's agreement on a major theme that is really where you're going to spend your time this slide, like to kind of flush out. Strategy is for the subpieces of each of these things to get to the point of doing a measure of success. They're wasting measure of success. The first is Finance, Taxes and Budget. Next was Community Relations. Third one was Town Planning, Carpets and Plan. Fourth category was Seniors. And the fifth included, again, just to be thorough in providing what the consultant reported back to you, the whole thing under the heading of the Council Operations. And I might suggest that maybe not in the goal, but a lot of the work you did at the retreat, which was telling themselves individually, and it was great, but maybe territorial work covering, maybe it doesn't cover everything.
The goal percent.
But through territory, again, this is exactly what was reported from the consultant.
And I certainly would encourage everyone to comment on the workshop that we had, the retreat we had, and what your own takeaway from that was, so that people can sort of hear, what do we do and how did you react to it?
Do you want to bring a moment, do some share around that, at that point now?
Sure.
Start from how the retreat went?
Be, and why don't, I'll start by noting that we spent a lot of time working on trying to understand how to address conflict situations where you're hearing something from a constituent that may not be exactly what you're thinking. And we talked a lot about listening. We did some role-playing that I thought was very effective. And my takeaway from the effort at looking at civil discourse was that we all learned from the experience. Katie, why don't we start over here with you, and go around?
Sure. I thought the consultants did an excellent job facilitating the session. It was well planned. I appreciated all my fellow counselors really showing up and digging in. It was clear, you know, we have differences among us, and I think we were able to kind of find some ways to look and listen to each other in a new way, which I think is going to make us more effective as a group. So, I was very pleased with the session overall and the work that we did there.
So, I think the thing that I most appreciated about it was really the discussions around civil discourse and not just interacting with each other, but how we can reach out to the public. I think one of the main things that, the discussions that I was involved in while we were there, was a lot about how we do more proactive outreach and listening to the public in general, and then also with each other.
Great.
I don't want to repeat what I agree with everything both of you have said. I know one of my biggest takeaways was when you're in a political body, you're not always going to agree. That's just the way it is. Sometimes you're going to have seven zero votes, sometimes you're going to have five two votes, sometimes you're going to have foot decisions or whatever, but it's just, it was good reminder that that's okay, you know? Well, you just try to bring everyone along, and if you don't, everyone needs to be respectful of each other's position. So, I thought that was very good.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll concur with what has been said all so far. I thought it was a productive use of time. I would have liked to have seen more time doing it. I think maybe for future reference, we take a, you know, maybe we bite the bullet and take a Saturday and spend a day doing it, or something where, I think it's that important and that valuable, the takeaway. I think the consultants did an admirable job for the amount of time that they had. And, you know, this is the second time that I've gone through this, and I think every time you take away something a little different. And I'm not Pollyannaish to think that the world's going to change now because of one thing, but I think if, you know, if I try and keep a hold of one or two things that we learned and build off of that, then I think it's a positive thing, so.
Yeah, I guess I kind of echo what everybody else has said. I thought it was a great use of time. The exercise I really liked, which I thought was really interesting, is they kind of had us to rock, you know, arrange ourselves as sort of our ideology and where we stood on just different ways of looking at things. And there was a wide spectrum, which is not surprising, we're all individuals. And then they really had us try to listen to why we lined up where we did, and then have the others from a different place repeat back what they heard. And that was a real eye-opening experience for at least me personally. It's really hard to listen. It's really hard not to put your own interpretation on what you hear, and we had some of that. So, it was just a great learning about how do you really listen and be totally present to what the other party is saying, so you can really appreciate where they are. That, to me, was a really powerful experience. And so, I thought they did a great job. I would echo, I think, it'll be interesting to see. We did it one year, we didn't do it the second year, we did it this year. It'd be really curious to see if that helps us kind of communicate, figure out how to communicate with our constituents. So, I thought it was a great, great exercise.
Tom, what were your takeaways?
Well, much the same. I congratulate you even carving out the two and a half hours you did. I know it's hard to do, but I was reminded how important it is. And I think the year is going to go by like this, you're going to be confronted with some predictable challenges, some unpredictable ones, and I think everything you could do to prepare yourself for those situations, you'll be better for it. So, I thought it was time very well spent.
The two professionals who assisted us in this exercise are community members, so nice to always applaud people who are giving us more than enough time. The amount of time they put in really was tremendous. John Shorup and Dana Morris Jones were the two individuals, and that, why, I think we all would like to express our appreciation to them. Chris?
Yeah, and if I could add too, I think it was valuable for me too to realize that, you know, they are part of the community and they have seen us deliberating before and have actually watched a few of the meetings. So, they have a real kind of broad understanding and a real take on watching the dynamics and the interactions. And so, I thought that that helps a lot with their recommendations, not just canned recommendations of, you know, consultant one-on-one says you should do X, Y, and Z because that's the right thing to do. They can look at our processes and the way we work through things and give real live examples of, hey, you know, here, what did you think was happening here? Because here's what it might have looked like.
Yes. Councilman Maye had inclement weather conditions on the roadway home just arrived, so Sean, why don't you give us your two cents on?
I swear it snows harder in your county than down here, because the roads were absolutely horrible.
Just wherever you want.
Exactly. You know, it rings out with me. As far as observations, I thought it was a well-run, well-thought-out exercise. I was a little nervous walking in, thinking, oh, it's just going to be what we did before, and it was not the same at all. So, there was a lot of introspective that went with that, and so I really appreciated what the work that was done. You know, you're never really going to know how successful it was until at the end of the year, when you sit back and look at, you know, how did we apply what was learned or at least what was listened in that exercise. So, I'm optimistic. And if the five items that are up on there are the topics of our goals, I think that our conversations were very well listened to by the consultants as well, because that encapsulates everything I was thinking of, so.
Thank you.
A little surprised that no one said they liked the charity stuff. I heard a lot of.
That's right.
So, Sean, what these are, through the lens of the consultants, these were the themes that they heard, you know, through the seven conversations they had with you individually. And what I suggested we do was kind of work through those themes. There's some subtext with each of them, and if that's an acceptable format, we can start with that. And I would encourage some conversation, does this still make sense? I wouldn't suggest, I don't know, but I don't believe that the, that all of these are consensus necessarily. I think they're through the lens of the consultants, they seem to align themselves. So, ideally, you'd work through and agree that these make sense, or if not, change that. So, starting with the first one. Starting with the first one. Get to sleep. I don't know. I was going to say. So, subtext, the first one they had recorded was under Finance, Taxes and Budget, was created long-term financial strategy for the town. Do you want to go through the, lift the ball first and drop out? Or you'll talk about it while I'm watching?
I think you should list them all first.
List them all, we'll jump around there. Let people have a place to do it.
Any order of priority?
You want to turn on the sticky key?
Why don't you look back at your, your printout? They're all right there for you to see. As I.
Something has taken over the stomach.
Did you click on that Nigerian banker who needed help?
Hey, she made me a prince today. So, let's refer to this with Tom, a handout? You'll see them all there. So, under Finance, Taxes and Budget, financial strategy for the town, tax relief for seniors, keep tax increase below three percent, and approve budget at first vote. That budget theme you'll see resonates on two or three of these as you go through.
Not that we would prioritize by Finance Chair and Finance Members, but I know this has been a matter of discussion at the Finance Committee, and so I expect that this probably had some origins in discussion to the part. So, Peter, why don't you speak to this issue first, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, I think in particular, the first bullet, which is really the long-term financial plan, I just add a little more detail around it. I think we have talked for several years of really trying to think about, and we certainly have been asked by our constituents, is not only is it a strategic plan, but it's almost a modeling of what do the outline the next couple of years look like for expenditures and tax rates and other, sort of financial modeling. And I think that's been a goal of the Finance Committee for a year or two now. I think it started under Sean's leadership of really trying to get there. So, I think that's where that bullet kind of encapsulates that. I think it's particularly important now that we've got the public safety building approved, and we're starting to have some conversations about what the school might be doing with their primary, you know, primary school education. So, I think that really plays to some of the themes that we've had.
And I've always thought that the capital improvement budget was designed specifically to deal with a long-range view of things. And so, that has made a lot of sense to me when, the years that I was on the Finance Committee. And so, and I've always thought that the principle of let's stay below three percent and really make an honest effort to do so, was a long-range strategy. If we could renew that vow every year, then we could say, our expectation is five years from now, we're still going to stay. So, that on the expenditure side, as opposed to the capital budget side, I sort of saw that as a poor man's long-term plan. But on the capital budget side, we are already, if I'm correct, doing a long-term plan. And part of our exercise, I think under Sean last year, was to look at where are we with our capital projects? And we were trying to prioritize, and we did prioritize the municipal building, and that moved forward very successfully. So, others who.
I mean, I guess my take would be, you know, I'm always very cautious on how we position these discussions, only because I think we've always, at least my experience through the School Board in two years here, we've always had a long-term understanding. We've been able to do projections. The real question is, is A, is that the right data to look at? And B, how fixed is that? Because it's the constant struggle of, you know, in a business, in a business world, you can manage long-term finances, you have controlled investments, you have controlled expenditures, you can shrink and swell, you have a little bit more control over what you reduce and what you increase. And I think with budget, we have to have a little bit of inherent flexibility in those plans, because there are a lot of things that we have to deal with that are unforeseen and that are beyond our control. So, I constantly struggle with the, with not having the long-term predictability. I think that's critical in any situation, but how rigid is that long-term plan? Is it something that we say we have to be at a certain goal or a certain outcome in two or three years, and it doesn't matter what the consequences of that are, because that's the ultimate goal? Or do we have something that's flexible enough that says, if in a perfect world, if everything's going the way that we hope and predict it will, then these are the outcomes we expect, but we have to have some kind of flexibility in there? So, I don't want people to think that this is like an epiphany for us, that all of a sudden we're saying, oh, we probably should have some long-term goals in mind. I think we've always had those. I think it's the emphasis that we put on them, and then the rigidity in which we lock those plans and or present those plans, I think. I think that the tax increase added below three percent, again, I've heard a lot of people say that's kind of an arbitrary number. Where'd you pick it from? You know, why is it Consumer Price Index, or why isn't it some other indices or something? And my recollection was that's not an arbitrary number. We actually, when we set that, I think, two or three years ago, we had done a long-term analysis over, I think, Sean, ten or fifteen years or something like that.
I think Will's the one that did it for us. Was it like ten years? It was a ten-year average?
I recall doing some research for us. I don't, I recall if this is where the three percent came from. But definitely looking back, because the numbers I looked at were over at least ten years.
So, I'm remembering that that three percent is tied. So, that's a tax increase where the equivalence on the actual amount spent, or spending, is about four and a half percent. For some reason, those two numbers just pop out, and I don't recall why or how we got to that, but there was analysis done that supported it.
Right, so my point was that was, and, you know, if I recall, the initial goal was to have predictable and sustainable implementation, right? So, in the past, we saw this giant seesaw curve of, you know, depending on where you were in the cycle, you had a seven or eight percent tax increase or zero, you know? And that creates a lot of volatility with budgeting and planning and predictability. So, we did the analysis, we went through, and it wasn't just we sat around and said, about three. No, no, I like four. No, no, I like one. And it wasn't that kind of debate. I think there was thought behind it. So, I'm very comfortable with maintaining that, because I think when times are good, the three percent is there to say, okay, we're not, you know, times are good, we can chug along. When times are bad, that three percent is an understanding that if we start going below that, then we start losing the ability to be flexible and maintain services and things like that. So, I like that approach and that concept, but I also, I also think that that is, again, important to state, that it's not an arbitrary number. It's something that does have thought behind it and reasoning behind it.
And let me take up the point that I made to all of you in an email, that the three percent or below, staying below three percent, if we can possibly achieve that, I've liked it as a goal. And we've averaged for the last four years, two point nine. So, we actually have, under arduous or demanding circumstances, achieved that goal. But yet, there is an element of dissatisfaction, a sense of a cloud over the process. And so, my thought was, why don't we start there? Let's ask the administration of this town, superintendent and the Town Manager, to see if they can achieve that at the outset. Now, we have, we still have to then argue and debate, well, no, this should be it. Well, if it is, something else has to come out. And, but I think it's a better place to start, because people are going to say, this isn't a game for these people, these seven Town Counselors. They're serious about that. So, I throw that out there as an idea that might get thrown into as a goal this year, as a sub-goal, one that we would talk with the School Board about.
And I, again, swing, and I think, you know, it's also important that the tax increase is a revenue generation issue. I think a lot of the budget discussions that we tend to get into is also what are the priorities for spending that revenue? And if we do get into a situation where we feel like the needs outweigh the means, then we start to have those discussions of what can we do and what can't we do? But I think if we, and I know it's a balancing act between revenues and expenditures, but we've, in the past, been very much expenditure-focused on what do we cut, what do we postpone, what do we delay? And I think those are all viable discussions. I think that's a, that's a good process to kind of weed out some of the stronger needs versus some of the things that, you know, if we can, maybe now's a good time to do it. I've always thought that that healthy debate and process is good, especially with constituent feedback, because, you know, everybody has, you know, let's look at the beach cleaning, for example, right? I mean, you know, for some people, that was a viable thing to remove from the beach because it felt like it was not a necessity, unless you were on the beach. And if you were a beach person, that was one of your higher priorities. So, it's always tough striking that balance between the priorities and needs of the community as a whole and not the individual ones, and balancing that with the revenue to support those needs.
Others?
So, I guess I would have some concern of the asking that first read budget proposal come in at three percent, only because we've seen historically that often there's a lot of uncertainty around that budget, and that, you know, it more, when there's a range, in order to, in order to not have a negative conversation later, the higher end of that range is chosen, and so therefore, we typically see it tightening as we get further on and get better estimates as the time progresses. So, I guess I'd have some concern if we were saying that we want that initial first read to come in at three percent.
We have seen the School Board present new numbers as we went through the process, where things, because they took a relatively conservative tact, they then were able to add revenue in, or an expense didn't turn out to be as great. I know we had, I think Health and Charities, for instance, is often one where we just don't know in, you know, March, when we put that. It's those hard choices, and I just think we put all this effort in, and yet, there's still people saying, it's a game. And I think that's unfair to the people who are making the effort.
I think it boils down to trust, right? I mean, if we have the trust of the community and there's faith in the process, and they understand the intangibles that we're dealing with, and they believe we're making the right decisions, and if ultimately the goal is at the end of the process to come out with something that looks like that, I mean, it's like making sausage, right? You've got to put a bunch of stuff into the grinder. You might not want to know what everything is that goes in there, but you want the sausage to be a certain length and a certain size when it comes out. So, I agree. I think, you know, there's always challenges with trying to set an initial goal up there because of all the intangibles. I don't know if it's good to set a high fast goal at the first reading and then constrain ourselves that way, or if it's more important to say, at the end of the process, and it is a process, it's always a process every year, that's where we want to end up. Because I think we did a pretty good effort this year with the joint meetings of saying, you know, and oftentimes, we went back to staff and said, you know, we need something else. We need, you know, here's where we're at. We understand everything that's going on, and we realize that these are some tough choices, but we really need to take that next cut at it and come back with some real high and fast numbers. And I think, as painful as that might have been, I think it was well-understood that that was the ultimate goal, and that's the process we had to go through. And it was collaborative too, which I think was important. It wasn't us making decisions arbitrarily or, you know, imposing things on other people.
Others?
Sean? So, understanding that we have, I think there's five different topics with only a half hour left, I'm going to summarize. I think three of the four items that are up here are achievable and I would support. It's the last one that I don't think is achievable and don't believe that's an appropriate goal, because we have simply no control. I don't agree, or I, sorry, I had a brain piece there. I think the first two need to be reworded slightly, because I think it needs, there's a larger focus. So, rather than creating just a long-term financial strategy, I think that we need to create a financial strategy that manages the town's financial health. Because by no means are we perfect in the short-term strategy that we have today, because we have several policies that we've created over time that aren't being employed or aren't being used and aren't being utilized to the full extent, whether it's about the capital budget, funding certain parts in the operating side rather than on the debt side, or reserve accounts, funding depreciation, things, I mean, things that are permissible already, and we're not doing anything. So, I think there needs to be a look at both of those in order to be able to manage it. Number two is on the tax relief. I think that there's a bigger issue around tax relief, and it's not just seniors. There are other, without getting into all the details, because, you know, there's so many different, but there are other folks, or there are other citizens or other groups that are also in need, that are at risk, whether it's veterans, younger families who, you know, can't, that are on welfare that can't afford it. So, I think that it needs to be looked at in a bigger perspective, rather than just, it's not just about seniors, it's about tax relief for everyone that needs the relief. So, I think.
Unfortunately, statutorily, you have difficulty reaching into those other parts of your population. Seniors are allowed to statute, and we have a very robust program that could be enhanced, if you wish, but I understand your point, and I agree with it, but I think coming up with a proactive strategy or program that we could administer and fund locally, I'm not aware that you can do it for everyone in need.
Yeah, the state statutes are pretty strict around taxation. Remember that the state controls everything we can and can't do as a town, which is frustrating sometimes, but.
Sean's point's well taken. Tax relief, there's, and you ought to look at it from the point of, if you can present a good budget that is fiscally responsible, you are providing some tax relief to those people who deserve that kind of consideration. So, that, I would look at it in the sense of delivering a good budget. I'll use the delivery of tax relief.
So, I am looking at it more from a programmatic perspective. So, as an example, one demographic, veterans. There are communities in Maine that, which I'm assuming must be permissible across the board, who provide tax relief for veterans based upon certain qualifications. So, not to get into the details of all of it, I'm just saying is that we need to look at it from a broader perspective and, you know, periscope, so.
There's a deduction on valuation.
I'd ask a process question, because it strikes me that, you know, is that something that should be put into an ordinance committee, into a Finance Committee discussion, or is it, I mean, what's the best venue to take that up with? Because Finance, we didn't really discuss it all that much, but there was adjustments made this year through ordinance, I think, to the actual. to the- to the actual allocation.
So, the one town that I looked at, which was the town of Wells, that does a larger program, actually started in their ordinance committee and then the finance committee. It's kind of like, you know, whenever you look at anything, you show, it's kind of like the legislature, right? The legislature asks fiscal notes on everything to determine is there a financial impact. You know, whether we employ that same type of strategy, not necessarily to the, you know, to the extent that they do, probably is worthwhile looking at. So, maybe this starts in ordinance and then goes to the finance committee to see what the financial impact will be because it has a budgetary.
Can you use the actual language that would kind of broaden that, so it's not so focused on seniors?
Yeah, when you think about it, um, I mean, I just said, you know, I just wrote tax relief programs for seniors and others in need or at risk. So, we can define those later. I don't, I mean, this is kind of a broad conversation.
My comment on this is that I think it's implied here, but maybe we should be more explicit that it's really, it's a means-based program. So, it's, uh, just- just because you're.
Well, our current program is.
Oh, our current program is need-based, sure.
Not- not to, and I won't mention anything, just as an example, I have a dear friend who, um, received social security income. He's a veteran. Uh, his social security income is actually less than his total tax. The only thing he gets because he has a senior and an income is he gets the $600. He can't afford the rest of his taxes. Because his social- his social security income is like, it's like $400 bucks a month. And his taxes are far greater than that. So, I think there's different demographics that you can look at.
But I also think there's different ways to approach that, and we've kind of had peripheral discussions around that with whether it's increasing the allotment based on means and increasing it above that $600 to, as a means test, or if it's broadening the program as a whole to- to give a little bit to everybody or something.
That's what well does. They defer, they- they, I call it deferring because they don't waive it.
Right.
You know, the program we do now, we give them the actual deduction, but they defer it.
I'd like to see us take this up in committee because, I mean, I think it's something that- that it's worth a discussion around for sure, but I think it's a complex issue. And, you know, I'd like to see a committee, whichever one we decide, kind of take this up and start doing some homework on it.
Saco also, I think, is something.
Finance, wanna take a shot at it?
Ordinance? Ordinance, I think, should.
So, without getting into those particulars, for purposes of tonight, if we can broaden that to means-based tax relief for seniors and others in need.
Perfect. Sounds good.
And then, Sean, I tried to catch up your suggestions on the first bullet, something along like.
I could say, um, create a financial strategy that manages the town's fiscal health.
I would, but I- I think, from what we've heard from constituents, however, that I think we think around that long-term financial modeling is something that needs to be worked on. I mean, because, I mean, it's- and it's more, Chris, I get your point, but it's more important now to a better public safety building that's bringing on a debt service. And now that we're, you know, at least, you know, preliminary, a pretty significant investment in a primary school, that's gonna be debt service. Um, we need to start looking at the planning and how we do that, how do we? So, I- I think, however you, the financial modeling piece is what people have been asking us for.
I would expect this bullet would be right in the wheelhouse of the finance committee, and I think you have broad mandate to do all sorts of things that you think are appropriate under this fiscal strategy or financial strategy.
And then, before you leave it, the only other piece that I had is, I think we've heard at least from a significant portion maybe the tax increase below three percent is a good starting point. But I think there's certainly expectations in certain parts of the community that three percent may not be the right number anymore. And how do we- how do we look at that based on even the comment Sean brought up, that a lot of people on fixed incomes are not getting three percent increases. So, I- I think saying below three percent gives us latitude, but I- but I think we shouldn't just accept three percent as the number. And I think we need to really balance the needs of the community, choices of the community versus what they're willing to pay for. And that's gonna be a really difficult conversation.
Katie? I don't wanna apologize upfront because I'm definitely not 100% tonight, but, um, I'm gonna back up a little higher and go back to the first page and just say I concur with all of those themes. I thought those were well-captured. In terms of this particular piece, I agree with all four of those budgets, or all four of those budgets. Um, I, in terms of bullet three, I- I would love to see us, and I know it's met with resistance, and it would be an extreme challenge, but I would love to see budget scenarios in which, what does zero percent budget look like? What would be the services that we would lose in town? And I think when you can show people that, they send themselves would make, you know, if you started saying, guess what, you're now taking your garbage to the dump instead of having curbside pickup, you know, some of those things, there's, they get a lot more for their bucks than they sometimes realize. And I think we need to find, and that, this kind of goes back to the first bullet, too, in terms of strategy. It's about showing people how to appreciate the value of the services that they are getting. And half of- half of the things that they're getting, they probably don't even realize.
And I've always, I'm sorry to interrupt, I've always thought that we don't do a really good job of showing people what's at hand for the tax. What are you getting for your taxes?
So, I think, you know, and I'm fine with below three percent, but I think the goal should always be, if you say three percent, then you're hitting three percent. I've always been taught, you know, whether I was playing sports or whatever goal I was at, you know, make the goal bigger because you might just hit it, you know? Make it- make it a stretch goal for you. Um, so, I'd be happy seeing, you know, one percent. I would love that. And then someone mentioned, I can't remember, Cold Head, uh, again, going back to the trust issue. We have to just continue to keep at it, keep whittling away and doing everything. And I think, uh, from what I saw at the listen-to-learn session yesterday, it was a great turnout. It looked to be a great dialogue. I had to leave a little early. But we are trying something different this year, and I think that's a good thing. I think we have to be listening, and if folks are really adamant that they would like us to still do the forum, maybe we still do the forum, or maybe we do a version of the forum. And I know that's not our sole decision to make. It would have to be something that the finance committee would work with the school board on, but, um, you know, let's- let's try to be really listening, uh, as we learned at our session. So, I don't know if any of that made sense.
Thank you. Uh, I think that, uh, getting below three, uh, is always a challenge. I've looked at the data going back twenty years, and it's closer to four. Long before any of us ever sat in these chairs. So, there's a long history of, uh, so, what we are striving for in recent years with, let's see if we can stay below three, is an achievement. If you just look at the five years preceding, six years preceding the four that we've, many of us have had an influence on the budget, which is below three, it's- it's more like four.
I think we're reaching, I think we're seeing in the last couple of years, we're reaching that point where people are unwilling to sustain that level, and that, we just need to be aware of that. So, that's because it's always been that way.
Well, we've done a good job in getting down to two point nine over the last four years, which there's no other period of time where that sustained, uh, level has been achieved.
No, and what you see always is when you go really low, is that it's followed by a number of years that you end up really high.
A rebound.
Yeah, you always get a rebound, yeah.
I, I, we, you know, you can.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody out there that comes to the poll that they need to buy into.
Perhaps, perhaps it's nuanced, but the way that stated below three percent is more exact and better than it's been over the last three cycles. The language was to less than or around.
Yeah.
So, I, you're.
Gives us more flexibility.
Flexibility, but you're also holding yourself to a higher target.
So, I guess, I mean, I'd be willing to support a lower number, but I'd wanna see some thought behind it and some metrics behind it and some- some analysis behind it, right? So, I- I think the, and that was kind of trying to my point before, the three percent isn't an arbitrary number. It's based on historical information and data-driven. So, if someone asked us, where did you come up with that, it wasn't, it wasn't just, well, we feel like this is a good number.
Yeah, goals should be aspirational, but you shouldn't set yourself up for failure. I mean, don't set a goal that you can't reasonably obtain.
Right. But to Peter's point, I mean, you're right. I mean, they do need to be, if they need to be adjusted, then let's put the metrics behind it, and let's put some data behind it. And if three percent isn't the right number, and we wanna explore that, let's figure out what- what metrics are behind it that we can show and justify that, yeah, you're right. Maybe it's, maybe it is cost of living or something like that.
And I get to tell us for that, maybe some of the finance committee can, I mean, we're, below three percent gives us.
Right, too.
Latitude, that's a good word.
And that's what I clarify, like, you know, my suggestion around a zero percent, what a zero percent looks like, it's really, it's not about, like, that's necessarily the budget I think we should adopt or the direction we should go. It's more about showing people what it would, what, how it would hurt.
And I appreciate that, but at the end, we'd be making the decisions on what would be cut, and it kind of falls back to me, like the Higgins Beach or the Pine Point Cleaning Decision, where we thought, and we voted unanimously that, yes, we thought that that could come out, and, you know, we got a lot of backlash and rightly so, but there was a lot more- more pushback on that particular issue than we had anticipated. So, I- I don't say that that's not a, that's not a bad approach to look at as a scenario, but we'd still have to make some kind of projections or some kind of decisions on what to cut, and that in itself could be volatile and create controversy in the community.
I think you'll see that thought on the next one.
Yes.
Cast a little more positively than negatively.
Again, we're talking about a budget. We don't know about tax rate until we get the valuation back much later. So, again, it's a squarely numbered.
So, maybe, before we move on, this, Sean, I expect some concern about the final bullet.
I'm fine.
All right, I will recast these first two in terms of circling through the two.
Regulation. Build trust with constituents. Making more open to the public, including more real dialogue. Help public developers input, respect the ways. This is what I think. Involve and engage the community in more budget, more in budget than other issues. So, there's great understanding of how money is spent and the value of services. So, that rather than hitting over the head with what we're, you know, what a drastic, uh, drastically reduced budget is, educate them on the value of what's in there.
Thank you. Jim Murray?
Yeah, as Chair of Communications, um, I read these, and they sound really nice, but they aren't helpful. As far as goals, because it's like, so how do you know when you build trust? What does that mean? Um, what's more, what the heck does real dialogue mean? Helping public offer input in respectful ways. I mean, these are aspirational as opposed to whatever, but don't give clear guidance is how I felt reading these. I mean, they- they sound wonderful. They're great. That, now, that bullet four, actually, I was one who talked about that when I talked to John and Dana, um, and I'm assuming Katie probably brought it up, too, perhaps some of the others. That's definitely something that could be, you know, how do you, how are you gonna do that? But anyway, that was just how I, I think they're great aspirational, but it's not, it's like, okay, so what more can we do that we haven't been doing?
Well, for instance, there was a conversation at the retreat, and we've already begun some of it, actually, in terms of real dialogue, um, our listening sessions, they, rather than listening, it's more of this give-and-take of information. So, I think, I feel as though we're starting to advance that, and there's other strategies that we could look at. There's also, I think, some willingness, it sounds like, to be a little more lenient with the folks at the podium as time and circumstance prevents. Those will be things that, if you're mindful of this being your goal, you'll find ways to engage.
Well, I know, but that's just the only thing. I thought they were very broad and very non, too.
Well, I'm gonna turn it back on you then.
I know, and I know, and it's like, I haven't had the chance to really think that through. I oppose.
There's certainly consensus, I'm hearing, on the theme itself.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Area of focus.
I think maybe to Jim Murray's point is, how to, so let's- let's look at these, what's quantifying them. What, if we're gonna say build trust with constituents, let's have a goal, what does that look like? What is the outcome?
Establish more or less.
Is it fewer email, I mean, there's gotta be some kind of tangible measurement that we can show success with, whatever it is.
Do a survey, begin the year and year.
Survey, uh, identify, you know, critique what we have for services that gets the message out. I mean, if we didn't have a Facebook page, if we didn't have a website, you could easily say, oh, this is easy to measure. You don't have this and this and this. These are standard items for being able to effectively communicate with your constituents. So, I think that is something, uh, if the communications committee is going to do its job of evaluating, overseeing, high level, uh, and saying, what are we missing? Where, how can we do the things that we're doing better? Uh, and that that, a report back to us, because that is part of the charge of the committee, let's- let's get that report, uh, out and.
And it could be that, that this is something that, okay, the communications committee, because I know our next meeting, what we're gonna be talking about is what is our goal? Because it was kind of loosey-dropey, whatever, in my opinion, from last year. So, setting a goal and specific types of actions. So, I think. That I could use, I can use this overall overarching theme to.
Others? I think we're saying we're gonna throw it to the communications committee to do a job of critiquing and recommending actions that will continue.
I'm not hearing any opposition, not opposition, but really finding ways to.
Yeah, finding ways to get it, yeah.
I guess the only thing I had, too, is that the number one, to me, on that, what really leaps off and just in the broadest text is just, how do we build trust? I mean, that's- that's what we've heard, so all the other things are kind of tools.
I mean, so maybe the trust factor is, how do you present a really good credible budget? Fiscally responsible budget, because if you said, where's the trust thing coming from? It comes from the, uh, the school budget. That's where, that's where, that's the largest contentious point.
I would say that's our perception of it, for sure, because that's what we feel like we put the most emphasis into it. But I think part of those listening structures might be, you know, a simple follow-up of, you know, if someone says, we don't trust you, the question is why?
Why, yeah.
Why? Because we say things like, you know, you're not debating enough in, 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 that's something that we always felt like seven to nothing votes are the way to get consensus and have everybody think we're good, and it was the opposite, you know?
Right, you're right. I think the focus on budgets is natural, right? It's a tangible validation or not of what you're doing.
Well, that's the one opportunity where the public can weigh in on a vote. And that's where we, I think.
Oh, the school budget, yeah.
On the school budget side, right.
Yeah. Move on to the. Controlling and comprehensive plan. So, three thoughts here, adopt a quality comprehensive plan. It's gonna happen within this next calendar year, so a year watch. Work with government developers to make sure their plan is good for the town. That's a process that's underway. In fact, there's a workshop scheduled for two weeks during the next meeting. And continue to work on increasing workforce housing.
Good. Well, thank you. Oh, thank you. My apologies for. Uh, so, I'd love to see a couple other, just points of emphasis included in there, if we could, specifically environmental resiliency and historic preservation, if work.
Can any of those fall under the comprehensive plan? And the reason I say that is because it's a work.
I think they shall be addressed in the comprehensive plan, absolutely. I'd love to see them called out explicitly as town council goals or points of emphasis that the county council is endorsing.
Can you be more specific, right? Like, environmental means, it could mean anything.
Uh, so, from environmental resiliency, I'm specifically thinking of seal drive.
Of what? Oh, okay, okay.
Then you have the conservation committee is doing some good work around that.
So, all of that's underway. And I think just including it in our goals is being supportive of the efforts that they're going to do.
And I, I mean, one of my themes with the, with the, and I don't even think it's, I don't know if I've said it here now, but one of my themes with the consultants was, I think we, you know, we do need to put a lot of, of, um, work back into tasking the boards and committees that we have. You know, and giving them a little bit more direction, maybe. I mean, I think the comprehensive plan's a great opportunity to kind of pull us all together and have a common goal, and then all contribute to it. But I think to your point on environmental, if, if conservation's looking at that, there's no reason why we as a committee can't, as a council can't say, we would like to task the conservation committee with looking at this and coming, looking at surrounding communities, what are they doing? Give us an update. Give them, give them, task them to do some homework and some research for us if it rises to the level of.
And they spend.
Jumping ahead, the first one is.
Working committee, so that's that.
Katie had it.
So, usually I go really high level first, but I'm just gonna throw out a gritty detail, and I'm not sure where it fits, if it's under this particular theme or not. But one of the things I've thought a lot about was, uh, you know, a few of you have said how quickly a term can go. And think about, uh, you know, being really one of the big things that you would hope to accomplish while you were serving. And one of the things that I would love to see us find a way to do somewhere or somehow is incentivizing building for, um, see us find a way to do somewhere, somehow, is incentivizing building for developers to do another fifty-five, more fifty-five plus communities. We've talked about it, it's been thrown out there in the comprehensive planning discussions, but, um, it's the type of housing we need, um, for sure, we know that, and it also helps the tax issue, so it's a, it's a win-win, as far as I'm concerned. I just am not sure how to go about it, or where it fits best.
I'm not sure what barriers we have in place, but that's not to say we couldn't create some incentives.
Well, the, the biggest barrier that I, my conversations with developers is simply, "That's great, Katie, but it costs me more to build that than it does to build a four to five hundred thousand dollar colonial, so I'm going to make more money off of there." So if there's an incentive to build that community, that type of housing, you know, then maybe we can get someone to buy into that.
Those are the same arguments I hear from developers, too, when I'm, I'm begging them, "Can you please do something?"
So, again, I, 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 laudable goals, I think, but I'd like to see some metrics behind it, I'd like to see some demographics in town of what percentage of population we're at now, and, because I think affordable housing falls into that gap, too, and I, I don't know if affordable housing incentivizes more opportunity to, to, to cover a broader sense of people versus fifty-five and older, and I'm not distinguishing, trying to discriminate against fifty-five and older, I just, I would like to see some, some demographics and some thought and, and processing behind making those goals. Because I, I agree, that could be, you know, it could come out that, that's a growing segment of the population, and, and that's something that we want to address, for sure.
Bill? I can add just one piece, I think they're perfectly stated, to some extent. The number two, though, is that, and that, you know, unless they come back, once Scarborough Downs, the owners of Scarborough Downs comes and asks for a contract zone, you know, I hope, I would rather see this language suggest that we work with the planning board to ensure that the Scarborough Downs development is suitable for the town, or is, you know, because it's really the planning board's job to do that.
But the uniqueness about the zone is they have to come up with a master plan, and we have to approve it as a council first, so, that's the uniqueness of this property.
Right, so since the, the next one is about operations, and it talks about using committees, the planning board is a committee of the town, and I think that we need to partner with them as part of this, no matter what the process is, in the long run, because they're the experts, we're not the experts.
I don't know exactly when and what they'll be, but I'm almost certain that they'll become a unit to you for some sort of change, whether it's zoning relief or changes, or connectivity, I mean, the, the council will evolve in the next year.
And when I looked at the, the first two, I said, "We've got a comprehensive plan probably a month to six weeks away, we've got a, a master plan for Scarborough Downs probably a couple months away, a, a full-blown master plan." We ought to, and I'd like to see the town manager give us some real guidance on, to work with, uh, the comprehensive plan people, which would be the planning department, the, code enforcement, uh, town engineer, we need to get right into that, and so workshops relative to having those elements presented to us, and where the policy issues are, that, that would be really rolling our sleeves up, I think, to be able to, if we're going to do a quality comprehensive plan, we've got to work at it.
So, and I think long-range planning has been the, kind of the central hub for, for that planning process, and I know they are interested in coming back in front of us very, very shortly, and giving a presentation on where they're at, and, and the process.
Any references to suggestions, one talked about the environmental resiliency and historic preservation, is being called up separately?
Well, the, the environmental's hu, a huge issue, I mean, that, this community sits on the ocean, so, I mean, that, that is a big deal. Historic preservation, that, they've done a pretty good job of actively advancing that, that whole situation, and we all know that our former Town Council Chair has been very active in advancing that, so, whether it, I don't know whether that would mean the environmental, yes, the historic preservation, though, this town benefits from an active effort at historic preservation, because it, it doesn't have a huge history of backlog.
I would say I wouldn't mind including them, but I'd like to see some specific goals in there, of what that would look like, like historic preservation, if it's, if it's, if it's saving a couple of buildings, or if there's specific properties that we had in mind, or if there's more, you know, community education around that, or community involvement around, something that's tangible that we can, that we can...
So I, I think that there are specific properties, but some of it is also just opportunistic, when, when some of the properties that are on the list become threatened, that, but, but my thought was really just, kind of, continue, third bullet point, with a couple commas.
Oh, strange things, kind of, continue to, for, for, for affordable housing, like environmental resiliency and historic preservation. I think it's not appropriate, once you, you've got a lofty goal, you push it up to committees, report back to us, "Can you help us advance this?", I think the metrics will probably come from the committee, they're down with the trenches.
And to Katie's point about fifty-five plus housing, we, we heard a lot of questions at the last listening session earlier this week, about, "How can you expand that tax base?", and, and without suffering any dramatic increase in municipal or school services? And fifty-five plus housing is one way, and we had a workshop last year with a developer, and who wanted to do fifty-five plus housing on a major scale, but he needed sewer, and we don't have sewer west of the highway, so, there's, there's, there's an impediment there. When you're talking this kind of housing, you're talking a fairly compressed area, so, can we work with developers? How we, how we go about actually, and drawing people with interest, I'm not sure, but I'd be interested in it. I think it is a, it's a way to grow our tax base without growing the expense side.
Okay, is there a general agreement?
We're past seven, so, this is real quick, seniors, you know, we talked, we're here, we're more, more seniors, right?
Yeah, and it was the, we may talk to the seniors group, I do know that's one of their goals, to work on the AARP-friendly town destination, so again, that's something that could go back to that committee, we've already talked about it. Just as a fun fact, AARP just put something out that said that Maine has the most AARP-friendly cities and towns of any state in the United States right now, so, I forget how many there are, but, that is something that...
Well, that'd be a metric.
Yeah.
A good metric.
Yeah, and there isn't a definite metric for whatever.
So there's a lot more goals than what I think they came, and this is one that I wondered whether it was actually a goal, or just something to be mindful of. So all of the, this theme with tough operations, well, I might have more heavily on these committee works, and they're organized more continuity year to year, spend less time on small impact issues, more big picture, more vehicles support decisions, more cremades and such, be able to disagree respectfully, all views heard, and all should kill those suspended operations, everyone included in all communications.
Does that sound like a goal to you, or is it just kind of, kind of like norm, laws, practices, those sorts of things? Things that you can check in on some frequency, importantly, or...
Yeah.
So maybe this doesn't rise to the level of a council goal?
Yeah, I, I don't think it does. But they're good rules to live by.
No, I, I agree, and once, I guess, in the end, I was going to conclude with, as we come through this, it's an awful lot of goals. I really believe in the keep it simple principle, and I, I still hear Sean, what we haven't done tonight, which I think we do need to do, if we're going to have all these goals, we've got to have some, some metrics that we can, you know, a year from now, that we either were successful or not, it gets to your point, so we'll appreciate it. So I think, on the finance side, some of those, the finance committee could take a look at it, try to come up with some goals, but I don't think we've got time tonight, but at some point, I think...
And what I would like to do is, is have it get, have it rewritten, put some assignments out to finance, others out to communications, or other assignments, so if, so that we can have a little bit clearer sense of, "Are we successful this year, or are we not?"
Well, my intention was, I'll certainly rework that, hopefully capture these thoughts, I'll send it out to the events, and tell me if I, if I missed something, and have it on your next agenda to have it adopted, I think having the council actually adopt it is important, then we can ship it out to committees and say, "These are the goals", what's your contribution here, and really ask them for that help, the tangible result.
And I would suggest asking the committees to report back with an examonic time on what they've done, what's important to...
Good. All right, thank you.
Two minutes, it will be.
Two minutes?
Already seven, almost. Hey, I've got other things to do.
Shovel.
Shovel.
Yeah, I've got to shovel my driveway.
Come on!
Yeah, but don't screw that.
That's a parrot.
No, that means nothing, it's not.
That's a parrot thing.
There's some snowballs.
I feel like I'm dragging one.
I have a shovel, my driveway, they didn't, they don't, they didn't come down the road at all. Yeah, we have the... But the police makes a way. I'm glad they're... They're...
Do you want to have a copy of that, or do you want to just come? Yeah, I posted this chapter in the, um, chapter that...
I was telling you, yeah.
Oh, they're, they're in here. Yeah, okay.
Oh, she already loaded it up.
You know what, I can't get Google Docs or something. It's not available. No, no, it's under the committee section. Should we go to the website?
I'll find it, I'll...
Okay.
Yeah, I hope we already discussed.
Thank you.
I would say that much time, much going on, it's huge. I must go with my laptop, you're...
I'm good at... Here, cool.
I'm getting my, 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 my mic's all white, guys. Be healthy, so.
Yeah, totally.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. You need, um, uh, I don't know, you don't have to do that. I'm out of this. Good morning, everyone, welcome to the Scarborough Town Council meeting of Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, we're seven oh nines, or a little late, we just had a workshop on goals, we're going to be discussing that again at the next meeting, as we try and revamp it, and then approve it, so, call to order, if you'd rise with me, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Bevine?
President?
Councilor Warren?
Here.
Councilor Foley?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor Hayes?
Here.
Councilor Chiazo?
Here.
Chairman Donovan?
Here. General public comments, anyone wishing to address any issue not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium. And Mr. Howard has a slide, I think.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick slides here. Good evening, everyone, Benjamin Howard, Seven Winter Pine. As I've begun preparing myself for the budget discussion this year, I downloaded all of the available budgets online, and put them into an Excel, and started to do some data analysis myself, but that's not what I'm really here to talk about tonight, it's just an idea for changing how we get the information to the public, in a way that I think could answer a lot of the problems that were discussed in the, in the Goals meeting tonight. So currently, this is sort of how the line-by-line items, and this is the section that I'm looking at right here, you look at it, and it's just a wall of text, and you look through, and you, as the president of the town, you just look through, and you go, "Oh, my goodness, what the hell does any of this mean?", excuse my language there, I'm sorry. But you go through, and you see numbers that are, for example, just below the arrows there, percentage increase of one hundred and ninety-eight point two percent increase, and that's where people start to freak out, but in no place do we have all this document data stored for all the previous years. So here, I'm just going to call out the middle school teacher benefits, as the data itself sort of looks the best, a lot of the other data doesn't look this nice to bring the point home, but, so the idea here is that you would have a link, that would just be attached to that line right there, and you click on that link, and when you click on that link, you would see this information here. Right here, you see the graph right there, of just the data from the teacher benefits at the middle school from two thousand and eleven, all the way up to two thousand and seventeen, which is what I have the data in there for right now. You notice, the budget that I showed you there was the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget data. That twelve percent increase is that little, that dip right back up to what looks like matched the previous trend. Now, as someone that's looking at that budget and sees the twelve percent, when I click on this, I go, "Oh, it kind of makes sense now, right, we had a dip", it does bring up the question, "Why we had the dip?", but we're not really debating that in the present year, you're debating where things are going, but that dip sort of makes sense, and it allows me, myself, to answer the question. To the side here are the exact numbers that you're seeing on the left, also available, I would also like to just put all the schools there for comparison, and this is to turn them on and off. The idea here is just a concept, it's just a lot of work with Excel, I've been doing my self-rep and all this data, it's very time-consuming, so you can use Visual Basic and such things to speed it up, but I really just want to collect the data right now, I'm not a guru with Visual Basic, but I'd like to get there, but first, I'd like to have the data for this year's discussion, but the idea would just be able to give the citizens more information, just by clicking it, so that instead of reaching out to you and questioning, "Why, why is it two hundred percent?", and to note that two hundred percent for the, the ed tech benefit also jumps back up, and it's just matching the sort of same trend that we see here, but it starts to answer those questions, and again, it also gives you trends, and see where things are coming from, so, this is just an idea, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, but if you could reach out to me at some point, it'd be greatly appreciated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, I appreciate all the effort that you put into that, because it's obviously trying to make an effort at having it be more understandable to the public, and I'm sure the town manager's interested in, in looking at it, and the financial people, and probably be able to give you a little feedback on that. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Ed Blanchard, on forty-six Main Road, it may have been brought up in other council meetings, I don't know, but, going down towards Time Point, from Route One, there was a speed limit, like a solar speed limit sign, so when you went from the forty-five, you transitioned into the thirty-five, and it would come on if you were going over thirty-five, I think, I think that it's gone now, for some reason, I don't know if it got, like, tossed to another part of town or something, I don't know, but, you know, I, I go down that road, you know, a lot, because I do glance for a living, so I'm headed down that road, and it's always like a, a good reminder, I mean, plus you're headed into the school, school area, I just think that they probably would be, you know, I think it...
Suite of changes in September. We actually created some language that was more restrictive, as I said, a bit redundant, but more problematic, more restrictive than any other zone in the town. So someone who has a property in the rural farming parts of town, or those who have in other beach communities like Time Point or Proud Snack, had more ability to rebuild their homes should they be destroyed for means outside of the owner's control, be that a fire, flood, what have you, an active god, so to speak. So the proposal would be to simply strike language under Article 5C2.h. We've looked at the language. We believe we have existing language in both the standard zoning ordinance and the shoreline zoning ordinance that covers those issues. We've talked about this with the Long Range Planning Committee, and they saw fit to put forward the proposal to strike that language. So that's the first order that's in front of you. And do you want me to just jump right into the mapping?
Please.
Happy to.
Thank you.
So I think the bigger component piece to this changes that came out of the audit process has to do with the actual mapping itself. This was an item that was actually brought to us at the public open house by residents in the Higgins Beach area, really identifying that, you know, there's a difference in the properties between Spurwink Road and Kelly Lane, that those properties are really different and distinct from the overall sort of oceanside neighborhood. That the properties are unique in that they, there are different development patterns consisting of larger lots, largely more suburban-style development, houses a bit set back from the road, this being sort of the main conduit corridor into the neighborhood where once you get beyond Kelly Lane and down into Greenwood and such, traffic tends to diffuse a bit more with all the interconnected roads. There's also one of the other big differences with these properties is that they aren't on public sewer. They are, don't have the ability to connect in based on the type of lines that are in the area. And so that really hinders what they can do and where houses can be set on the property since they need to have onsite testing systems. So based on the feedback we received at the open house, we did an analysis of the, I believe it's 16 properties, developed properties, and sort of looked at what are the prevailing development patterns. What we found was that really, you know, one of the goals of the Higgins Beach character code was to align the zoning with the prevailing development in the area. And by and large, we felt like that was generally well-received, sort of on the ocean side of things, but sort of missed the mark, if you will, in this sort of gateway stretch. And so after some further discussion with the committee, with the residents, the prevailing consideration is to revert the zoning back, for these properties, back to the R4 zone, which they were prior to the 2000, December 2015 adoption of the Higgins Beach zone. And so that's really a map amendment. Staff working with the Long Range Planning Committee, we sent letters to all the affected property owners. We received five responses back, all generally favorable. One person did request consideration to enable in one year, have a transition period in which both zones might apply, where people could figure out what they want to move forward with. That came in late or earlier today. And then I believe council members also all received a letter from Ms. Bristol who lives down on Bayview Avenue, and she had some questions regarding the Higgins Beach Marketplace property. But I think with that, I've given you quite a bit to think about and here to answer any questions as they may come up.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions? Will.
So you started off by discussing what I thought were changes that would allow improvement to non-conforming structures without having to go through administrative. But is that something that is coming in the future? Because I didn't see that in there.
Yeah, so that was actually what was adopted in September. So in September, we adopted, let me see, language under Article 5C2 is two, that was the, all the new language, and we had A through H. H was sort of the last section, and it was H where we sort of, as staff reviewed it and talked to Long Range, felt we might have stepped outside the lines a little bit unnecessarily, and think this is a good course correction to just delete that language, so.
Great, thank you. And then I was wondering, could you provide any color to the letter that we received about the CMU zone?
Sure. Let's see, so this is an issue that the Long Range Planning Committee talked quite a bit about. So the concern that's been raised, and I don't, I'll do my best to speak for Ms. Bristol, but you know, again, hopefully I've captured correctly. One of her concerns has been the ability for the four properties that are in the coastal mixed-use districts, and that being the Marketplace, Higgins Beach Inn, the Higgins Beach Association Clubhouse, and the Breakers. And what that zone, that district allows is for basically those four uses to exist, and then those properties could change use. Her concern has been the ability for those properties to change use, maybe one that's now a bed and breakfast or an end-to-be-all change to a retail use. That's something that was actually looked at with the initial adoption. And one of the provisions that, in the language currently, it says, any, any change of use requires going back to the planning board for a full site plan review, sort of look at those impacts. So certainly, the Long Range Planning Committee heard Ms. Bristol's concerns and debated those. I think Mr. Duncan and Mr. Chiado speak to that. There was a pretty healthy discussion around that issue, but ultimately decided to move forward with the, with what you have before you.
Thank you. Other questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. We'll take up the first, Order Number 1801. Motion, first reading, refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments to the Higgins Beach character-based zoning districts. And this is the language relative to rebuilding after damage of more than 50% of the building. Anyone in the public who would like to be able to speak to this issue? None? Accept the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chris? Yeah, both of these issues were pretty well-debated in long-range planning, pretty helpfully discussed and vetted fairly well, and I'm pretty sure it were unanimous decisions across the board for long-range planning. So very comfortable putting the recommendations forward, well-thought-out, well-debated, well-documented, and well-discussed.
Great.
I know, as Jay mentioned, I wasn't on long-range planning last year, but prior to, again, there was a lot of, there's been a lot of work done on this whole concept in that area. And I think it's great that, you know, you see the reviews, that, oh, this isn't working, this is. Again, knowing how long-range planning works, I feel extremely comfortable as a counselor that if they vetted this, then it's, I will approve it, so.
Other comments? I will say, I really admire the perseverance of the planning department here, because what they've been trying to do is get it right. And if they see one aspect or another that isn't quite right, because this is very unusual zoning, and none of us have really ever had much involvement with character-based zoning before. So I really have a great deal of respect for their willingness to stick with it and come back these several times now to get it as, as good as they can be. Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. The second item is 18002, first reading, and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning map. Anyone in the public who would like to be able to address this, please approach the podium. None? Accept the motion.
Still move?
Second.
Discussion.
Chris? Yeah, I just wanted to expand a little bit on Counselor Rowan's question about the letter that came in. The woman did present her argument to Long Range Planning, and it was, it was very, again, very intently debated. I think at the end of the day, with the additional requirements of going in front of planning board, coupled with the fact that removing that ability for some of the CMUs could be restrictive or detrimental to those businesses in particular, we felt that there were sufficient checks, if you will, in the process and the system to allow that to move forward, and we were comfortable making that decision moving forward. So, so I think that the issue, the concern was heard, it was well-debated, addressed, and ultimately, I think the decision was that there's enough checks in the system now to, to help mitigate any situations that might arise.
Other comments? Again, this is a matter of inadvertence, where we were trying to make all of Higgins Beach conforming, and a great deal of effort was put to it. But this little stretch, as we enter Higgins Beach, was developed a great deal later, had always been R4 when those structures were built, and so it fits more comfortably into an R4 setting than a Higgins Beach character. Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Order Number 18003, first reading, and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, Section Roman numeral 7C, residential density and affordable housing provisions, subsection B, affordable housing in lieu fee. And I'll ask Counselor Rowan to introduce this.
Thank you. So as you may recall, the Affordable Discovery Housing Alliance has been working on comprising a RFP that they'd like to put out to encourage projects to be submitted to build affordable housing in the town. And as we're putting that together, we refer back to this section of the zoning ordinance that specified what the in-lug fees can be used for, because we were, we have some funds that we're suggesting could be used, which is the intent of that RFP. And as we were doing that, we noticed that it stipulates some of the things that it can and can't be used for, and it was observed that one of, it does not explicitly prohibit the use of those in-lug fees to be used to build houses inside a zone in town where affordable housing may be required in order to develop those properties at all. And so the thought was that the onus was on that developer to build the affordable units in those zones under certain conditions, and therefore, that it wouldn't be appropriate for those in-lug fees that were collected with the intent of producing additional affordable housing to be used in the construction of those units. And so this is just an addition to say that, that in an inclusionary zone, the in-lug fee may not be used in order to, at least to meet the obligation that the developer is under to, in order to develop that property.
Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to address this proposed order, please approach the podium. None? Accept the motion.
Still move? Second.
Discussion. Pretty straightforward, Matt. Really inappropriate to have these funds used when it's an obligation of the development to provide this housing, so. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Order Number 18-004, act on the request from the Shellfish Commission to approve the allocations of shellfish licenses for 2018. I'll ask the liaison to the Shellfish Conservation Commission, Counselor Hayes, to introduce this.
Yes, good evening, everybody. This is the annual process that we go through about looking at the shellfish licenses every year. They're in front of us tonight with their recommendation, and I'll just reflect back a little bit of history. Last year at this time, there was some conversation about whether we should expand licenses or contract licenses. We did have a discussion as a council that we really were interested in seeing some survey work done and some other things, I think. They're in front of us tonight, and I think they're recommending not to make any changes because we haven't done some of the things that we, we committed to do. So we're going to leave it static for now. I think that's their recommendation, and I totally support that. And I think there are some commission members that are here and some others that are interested that are here, so they may speak to it. But I think I, I support their recommendation not to increase or decrease licenses for next year.
Very good. And as further introduction, the chair, Robert Willett, is here. If you would give us a little bit of insight into...
Good evening, council. Robert Willett, Free Trackview Terrace. So January 9th, we held our shellfish meeting, and we discussed license numbers. We proposed leaving the same. We had no opposition in that. We had a unanimous vote to keep them the same. We tried to get some survey work done this year. We lapped on participating people to do the surveys. I expected, you know, the gentlemen that were here last year that were pushing this would have made more of an effort to, you know, prove what they were saying, but I guess there was no proof, so. We're going to discuss this year on possibly making it mandatory to do surveys, to hold the shellfish license. And we have some other ideas for some different lottery auctions to try to maybe weed out some of the, you know, people that really want to have a license, you know, maybe people that try to draw them and don't quite use them as much as people would like to say. So we'll be discussing that over the next few months with the possible ordinance change or something on that. Other than that, everything seems to be going good. UNE is getting involved now. We have an undergrad student, his name's Curtis, and he's going to be doing a two-year study on the milky ribbon worms. He told us in the meeting that Scarborough has a very high volume of milky ribbon worms, more than he's seen in any other town that he's looked at. So they're going to look into, I don't know what they're going to do, but they're going to try to do some stuff. They're going to talk maybe electric chalk or something like that, see what happens. So other than that, there's not much more to report. Other than, there's going to be some, some laws coming down from Augusta that are going to start affecting some of these harvesters. They're going to have to start probably icing the product down on the flats and stuff like that. So the state's trying to turn the page on this whole industry too, and make it, you know, more of a viable industry. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Willett?
Chris? So I appreciate the work you guys have done. I know we've spoken a couple times. It's definitely not glamorous, and it's a lot of hard work. Can you talk to a little bit about the issue of the surveys? Because I have heard some questions about what was done, what wasn't done, maybe elaborate a little bit about why. Were any surveys at all done this year?
Yeah, I conducted the survey with three other Shellfish Committee members. Mr. Green was able to do half a survey because he lacked participation in his survey. The third one got canceled because we had no volunteers whatsoever. So like I mentioned, we're going to try to make it mandatory to have to do the surveys. The problem with the surveys is it's going to take a few years by the time you have enough data to actually crunch the numbers and know what you're actually talking about. And my, my biggest mistake with surveys is they don't have any, any type of, you know, assessment on about, you know, what the predators eat, and, you know, what the seagulls eat, you know, what we kill in the wintertime, what we put in the mud, what the clams will bring. So they kind of blind-size you a lot too. Because a lot of the product is, you know, I've heard people say up until now, even the product gets, doesn't even come to harvestable size. Some of the state biologists call it that. And of course, it varies between area and how many predators you have.
So is it fair to say, I mean, the survey's more of a subjective analysis, right? And it depends on, I mean, two people could be looking at a flat and looking at the same number of seed there, but have different conclusions. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
So how do you, how do you mitigate that and manage that? Because I assume that's part of the basis for determining licenses, right? What's, what the potential future harvest is going to be.
Yeah. It's really hard to, I mean, we have areas that catch seed every year, and they're really like wet, running areas, and really hard to dig, so it's really hard to get the clams out of them. And so you see all these clams, but then when the tide keeps coming in, it keeps smothering all these clams, so we never really get to harvest a lot of those clams that are actually there. So other areas, you might have, you know, infestation of milky ribbon worms. You can identify those pretty easy. They, they leave like these little humps on the flats, and you can clearly see that, you know, they eat all the clams right out there, and there's clams right there on the other side there. So I, I'm not really sure on how we can hopefully get all the data on a survey, when you add in all the different variables that, that come into it. You know, I've been on the committee for 10 years, and even before that, I attended meetings, and, you know, I've never seen any of the council members or anything take out a calculator and start crunching numbers. Anyway, so it seems like it's just been like a, they just, you know, when they want to give some out, they give them out, and they don't, they don't. That's what, you know, that's the problem that we're having now. And when they keep, you know, discussing with the new generation, you know, the younger generation, stuff like that, they want licenses, licenses. Problem is, you throw 50 licenses out there, doesn't mean any young guy's going to draw one. So that's the problem that we're having now. So we're going to have a discussion within the next, probably like the next four months, we're going to have some workshops and stuff on a different lottery process to try to, you know, ensure that the people that might use license more have a better chance of getting one. That's, that's the only way that I can really see that, that license is the one we've discussed at the last shellfish meeting. Once we start doing that, we're actually going to have to decrease our numbers, because you're going to have more active harvesters. So you're going to have to come back on your numbers just to, you know, to bring them back down, because we can't support, you know, 36 commercial licenses out there full-time and it doesn't work.
Chris? Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think, you know, one of the things that we were discussing was, you know, how to, how to better manage it, how to bring newer people in. And I'd like to see you guys do a little bit of focus on the, and this is just me, a little bit more focus on the intern program and the student program, finding a mechanism to allow those kids to continue on if they choose to. Because it strikes me now, if I understand it correctly, once their license expires, they go back into the lottery system like everybody else, and that seems to me a little counterintuitive on what a, what an apprentice program should be like. So I'd be happy to work with Counselor, Counselor Hayes and present something to you guys or come up with something to try and work through, but I, I'd like to see you guys put some focus or some emphasis on including those, those student licenses and finding a good mechanism to roll those over into commercial licenses afterwards.
I'm awfully, if we can figure out a way to do it. I mean, you can't give every single one a license, but you can make a very good opportunity for bulk of them maybe to have a license. Other towns might use programs similar to that. They do it on a, I believe, as long as the student does, the following year, that like, when they're going to lose their license, if they still do their conservation time, say like four of them, there were two licenses come available, only four of them get put into the lottery. So two of them are guaranteed to get a license. Something like that might work even better, if the town supports something like that.
Right, so like I said, I'd be, I mean, I think, to me, a solution's much better coming from you guys than it is from us, the city, or you guys are the experts. But I'd love to sit down and, and talk about some other, you know, some ideas of the best way to implement that, because I do think that, you know, it is, it is, it's twofold, right? It's getting the younger generation engaged in it, and it's also a mechanism to allow them to continue, whether that's, you know, adding that as a separate form of license or however, whatever's the best way to approach that, the easiest way to manage it. I'll defer to you guys, but I'd like to see some, some work in that direction.
That would be, to me, that's, that's the greatest idea that we can, that we can support to do it. So got a way to, you know, enroll these students out there, you know, because basically, they work with all of us, commercial guys, a lot of students, they work with me all the time. You know, and I've showed them how to do this, and, you know, the safe way of doing it, and stuff like that, so. Our work feels, we'll show the guys to be able to get a license. And, you know, that's probably the best way to do it, but I didn't know how, what term I'm going to use, if they would support so much of that, too. But I would love to go that direction, if you...
Robert, would the Shellfish Conservation Commission be able to come back to us in about four months with a recommendation? And I would, I would encourage you to, we have two people who are very interested in this to assist. They're absolutely right. We'd like to have the solution come from you people who are...
Yeah.
So can we, does that, does that sound satisfactory?
Absolutely. We kind of, we kind of just set that goal at the last meeting, not to bring it to the town council, but we did set a goal that we were going to try to have something in place, maybe before this, this license year comes up. If they have to do conservation time or something like that, it wouldn't come into effect in the following year, but we did, we did set a certain goal to, to try to have something that we can do all of it.
Thank you. I think we'd support that, to try and arrive at an equitable outcome.
Well, that would be great. I'm sure there's a lot of student diggers with big smiles on their face. You know, I'll do anything for those, for the kids that are out there digging, that, you know, they're all great kids. They come out, they work very hard. And it's very hard to learn how to do this, especially on a commercial level, to where, you know, you support a family or something, and you can't just, you know, do it whenever you want. You're really going to work at this, and a lot of those kids are real hard-working kids.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Willett? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Public, any comments from the public who would like to be able to address this issue?
David Green, 135, Beach Ridge Road. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I think I will, because I'd like to address what Mr. Chiago said about student licenses being an apprentice program. That was not how it was set up. It was set up for local students to earn good money to go to college and put them out into the world and not become clam diggers, okay? Please, don't turn the program into something it was not intended for, okay? You need to go back and look at your ordinances if you want to go take that route. I don't have a problem with it, but that's not its intended means, okay? It was intended for kids to make a good summer of temper change to go back to school. My grandson does it, and I fully support the program, but you can't just say, we're going to keep all these people on, because the only time when you talk about license numbers is up. Now, I want to give you all something to think about. How do you get rid of a license? And how long do you think it's going to take to get rid of one license that's out there right now? I would make a recommendation, because you got, you got no data from the committee this year. You couldn't even get a land-in report, did you? You didn't get any survey reports. You got no data. So you say, well, let's, let's just stay where we're at, we'll be safe. How do you know that? How do you know you're not already over too many license numbers? And I'm going to tell you, if you took four licenses back on a commercial diggers level, that's 10%. It'll take you 10 years to do that by attrition only, okay? I don't want to take anybody's license away, but you need to start looking at that, because you don't have any direct control of good, better, or, on, on license numbers compared to what's out there to go dig. And you don't even have a land-in report this year to look at. Nobody wants to get one. So where's the data? Please, we need data, okay? And surveys are not data. You put too much emphasis on surveys. They mean absolutely nothing, other than what Mother Nature put here, because three years later, the equation doesn't come out right. Too many predators. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to address this issue?
Ed Lantet, 146, 10 Road. I've had my commercial license since 1991, and I've seen a lot of different good years and bad years, and the bad years are really bad, and the good years are really good. But as far as surveys go, I think if, if you're set on surveys and you need to do them, like after the summer. I think the reason why very few people, I didn't do any surveys, I did all crab projects. I think the reason why very few people, I, I didn't do any surveys, I did all crab projects. I think the crabs are where you're going to, you know, there's some you could see because it's, it's been warm the last couple of years relatively speaking. This year, we hopefully killed off a bunch of crabs this winter. But you could, you could go dig up in Libby's River and you could just, you know, in the morning when you first hit there, you could just watch the crabs march right down the river. And those crabs eat a lot of clams, a lot of clams. And the other thing about surveys is, you know, you might survey an area, but, you know, like if you get a heavy, heavy rainfall at low tide, like, like the, the year we got the 13 inches of rain there, I can't, I can't remember exactly what year it was, but Claypits was loaded, just loaded with seed. And after that rain, you go up there and it was, it was gone. I mean, the seed was completely gone. And, you know, as a clam digger, you're, you're, you're thinking, oh boy, this is going to be awesome. You know, I mean, and you're already setting, you know, you could be setting license numbers in your head and then Mother Nature just cleans it right out, just cleans it out. And as far as the milky ribbon worms go, you know, five years ago, we'd looked all over for them because they're great for stripers, catching stripers, you know, you'd go to certain areas and you, you'd get a few. There weren't very many. And now there's all kinds of them and I don't know where they, you know, I don't know how they found us, but they found us. So, you know, there's, there's, in my opinion, there's like three big predators. There's seagulls, we don't have any control over that. And there's milky ribbon worms and it didn't seem like anybody has the answer on that. And green crabs, hopefully they got cleaned up this winter, I mean, with a really cold winter. But as far as surveys go, I mean, if you, if you want them real bad, then you need to schedule them in September because not very many people are going to do it and they can have limits, unless it's mandatory. If it's mandatory, obviously they're going to do it. But getting crabs, I think is more, more beneficial.
I see. Anyone else wishing to address this issue from the public?
Pardon? Can I have a second? Sure. So I, I just wanted to clarify something, Mr. Green. I'm not suggesting at all that every single student out there gets a license and I don't want to dictate a solution. I'm just suggesting that some of the comments last year were the need to get some new blood in and, and find a way to get more people engaged or more younger people engaged and I think it's a good opportunity to do that. I certainly would defer to the Shellfish Committee and whatever recommendation they come up with, but I do think it's worth discussing and, and moving that forward. I think surveys were also something that was discussed last year. I agree 100% data's important. Part of the challenge we had last year seemed to be deciding on what data was what and what wasn't. And we talked about third parties coming in and looking at it and, so at the end of the day, we've got to find a way to manage the resource. We rely on you guys to do that. You're out there, we trust you, but, you know, there is, there, there is some room for improvement, I think, and hopefully we'll move in that direction.
Accept a motion. Move approval.
Second.
We have commitment from Mr. Willet to get us something within four months and thank you. Ready to vote? All taken. Affirmed. Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number eight, non-action item. Oh, thank you. Yeah, order number 18005. Act to approve the resolve to accept donations for the fuel assistance program. Anyone wishing to address this on that matter, please press the podium. Let's see if I can find that. Resolve accepting donations for the fuel assistance program, be it hereby resolved by the town council as follows. The town of Scarborough gratefully accepts the pledges and donations from the following business and persons that have been collected to date to be used for the fuel assistance program, citing Mr. and Mrs. Jeffrey Ertman as having made a contribution. And be it further resolved that each business or organization or person be recognized for their generous donations as a token of the town's appreciation. Accept the motion.
Still move?
Second. Discussion.
As you all know, I, I actually left some trash bags up there too that goes to the fuel assistance program. This is a really critical program in town and as any of you who had trouble getting oil or propane delivered, even if you were a regular customer, know that, yeah, for people who couldn't have regular deliveries, and that's a lot of majors. They do cash, you know, when they've got the cash, they fill up and anything I think that we can do through Project Grace and, and this liaison that we've got with, with them through the town is most helpful. And there is a fuel assistance rally the first weekend in February. I know I can't go because I've got something else. I want to get February. I don't even want to do it. 10th, something like that. But anyway.
Will soon and publicize the date.
Yeah, please come. Please donate. And thank you to the Ertmans for making it.
Others?
Chris? So I did want to just point out that, say thank you to the Ertmans. They're very active in the community across the board, done a lot of work with the schools, even after their, their, their children have graduated and moved on. I think Jeff still comes back and plays a mean trombone with the band from time to time when they need help in the brass section. So I certainly appreciate their, their efforts across the board. I did just get a fuel delivery and it was not cheap. So supply and demand, obviously prices are extremely high right now and every little contribution helps for sure.
Thank you. Will?
Oh, I was going to echo the exact same sentiment that, that Jeff and Dever are incredibly generous with their time and money and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Others? See none? All in favor? Affirmed? Unanimous. Thank you. Standing special committee reports, and these are reports. I'll let that down with you.
Excellent. So the library liaison tomorrow is our first board meeting of the year, so I'll be able to report at the next meeting on progress. And I believe the library director has reached out and asking to have a, a meeting workshop with the council, so we will have that pretty soon. We'll get information. Appointments committee will be meeting on January 29th, which is the, is a Monday at 5:30 here in Chambers. So we have a lot of work to do to catch up because we're a little bit behind. And that's all I have for committee reports.
Thank you. Will?
Thank you. So as I alluded to when I was introducing the ordinance earlier, the Scarborough Housing Alliance is very close to having a draft of an RFP to be presented back to the town council that we'd like to get out this winter. So I'm, I'm hoping it's either going to come back at the next meeting or unfortunately thereafter, but, but they're making great progress there. The, I have one item that actually crosses two different committees. The Southgate House is being developed by Avesta Housing into affordable units. They've done some demolition there. They're also applying for historic credits and I think as part of that process, that property's been nominated to the National Registry of Historic Places and that's being supported by Historic, the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, which also met and it was a really interesting meeting. The developers and current owners of the proprietors, Meeting House and Parish House, which is at the, on County Road, on the Buckston Line, came to kind of talk about what they're proposing in terms of restoration and it's a, it's a perfect use for that location. They, they want to use it for events. And so it's a beautiful old church built in 1839 and has a parish house next to it. They want to rent it out for weddings or, and other events and they have a night there, have some slight modifications that they want to make, but they're, they have the flexibility with the committee and it was a really, really terrific discussion. So thank you to, I won't write down their names. So J. Chase came by with Jason Haskell and Mark Tibbetts.
Thank you. Katie?
Conservation Committee met to work on and approve their final, the final documents for the comprehensive plan, their submission, their piece of it, which does address a lot of concerns around the sea level rise and emergency preparedness and, and are we ready for that? So we, that's going to come before council shortlur, actually no, it's not, it's going to land-based planning first and then before it comes back to us. Also, Eastern Trail Alliance, as everyone knows, they filled the gap with the help of Maine DOT and they have one more full group meeting. It's been a pretty large group that's been working on those efforts over the past year or two or more. And then they're going to, but they're going to be kind of reassessing whether that group needs to stay intact or whether they need to condense if they start to move into the next phase, which is really more of the design and the permitting phase of the project. So that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Thank you. Katie Gray?
Um, yes. Communications met and we had initial meeting, reviewed some of the information we were able to gather from what went on last year and we are going to work on a goal and also it sounds like we have a few action items to look at after this meeting today. Ordinance tomorrow has been postponed. We will not be meeting tomorrow because I don't know what we may meet on, but we will be meeting on February 15th at, I can't remember which time which one it is, but 4:30 on ordinance. The next communications meeting, in case you are interested in, in following it or attending, is February 8th. The seniors postponed their meeting due to weather and whatever, but our next meeting is, I want to say February 13th. I did look up and fuel rally is February 10th. So that's it.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, just kind of a quick update, I think, kind of a shout out to the Shellfish group that we were discussing, that they did mention, but I thought it's really worth paying attention to and really kind of a shout out to David Green. A year ago, he had reached out to the University of New England to see if they could do some work on the milky worm and just try to figure out why Scarborough was being so impacted when other communities are not. And actually a grad student came. He came in front of the committee the last time they met. He's got a two-year commitment to do this, but the work will continue. He's actually asked, he's trying to create a poll and a survey that as all the clambers are going out, wherever they see the milky worms, they're going to start keeping a record of the soil, the type of soil, where they're finding them, the temperatures. So it's, I, it's really, thank you, University of New England, it's really important work that's being done and hopefully we'll start to get some answers about some of the predators that are in our water. So just wanted to give a shout out and say that's great work that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
So Energy was supposed to meet this morning, but it was postponed due to snow until next week. Transportation met last night. We went over quite a few things. We looked at some adaptive traffic signal controls for the Route 1 corridor, specifically for the Dunston area. That's something that we're looking at proposing as a test section for, for adaptive street controls. And the goal of that is to try and help traffic move a little bit smoother. It's not quite like the, when we get too technical, it's not like the loops where it does a timing thing, it does more, it's a little bit of a smarter application to looking at traffic flow and managing the lights and signals and things like that. So that's certainly something that's going to be moving forward. We reviewed the comprehensive plan and the transportation issues surrounding it and got some general updates on Eastern Trail as well as the regional transportation management systems for Payne Road and Route 22 as well, which is again, more of a traffic control signal kind of thing that the, that are regionally controlled so that traffic flowing, let's say from the main mall to Pleasant Hill across Payne Road is all controlled continuously through one system. So it's just a way to kind of help traffic flow a little bit smoother through that. Those are, those are part issues that need to be done and accommodated as part, believe it or not, of the east-west connector because we have to look at viable alternatives to funding an east-west connector and one of the things we're doing is maximizing the transportation, the flow in the existing roads so that we could look at that and see if expansion is possible or if that's the area to put the traffic on versus an east-west corridor. So all these are preliminary steps. That east-west corridor connection from the Turnpike to Gorham is a long ways off, but we're starting that, that kind of preliminary process of looking at traffic flows and things like that now.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of points of interest. It is very busy early in the year, so I think that speaks to, I think will be a busy year and hopefully successful year. I think I made the observation to Councilor Hayes when I was talking with him, I feel a bit overwhelmed, you know, juggling all these balls and I don't want any one of them to hit the ground. They're all kind of equally important, so it's an exciting time right now for sure. In terms of community engagement, Julie Kugelberger and myself have engaged the community twice now, twice last week and, well, one last week, once yesterday and two times next week on what we're billing as listen to learn. The intention there was as we form our budgets and working with our senior staff is to receive input from the residents in terms of what they like, what they don't like, what services they favor, what they like less of or more of. Not surprisingly, it truly turned into more of a kind of give and take of information. And judging from the first two sessions, by kind of asking the participants if they liked the flow of information, they seemed to like that and we're pleased to accommodate. So to the extent that there's a question and we have a readily available answer, we do our best to provide that and inevitably it responds to a follow-up question. And so there, there's been a good exchange of information and even among the participants, they're talking among themselves and that's equally good. So I think each of them have run about 90 minutes and my assessment is we've kind of run the table, kind of run through the list of questions on the, on the front of their minds anyway. So that format seems to be working well. The other part of this engagement strategy will involve many of you, all of you, I hope, and what I think we're billing is kind of a neighborhood outreach or road show. So once the budget's been presented and kind of out there in the community, is for you then to give some really budget specific reaction. So it'll be interesting to see how this continues over the whole process. But we've been very gratified. First session had 29 participants and yesterday was 24. And so there, I think there really is something to switching up the venue and the time of day. The first one, we offer childcare and we took advantage of it. And yesterday, we offered free transportation, should include it. So I think going to those extra efforts really, I think will make some differences. On the public safety building front, things have really picked up speed. We, I think I reported last time, we have engaged Context Architecture to continue with his design and construction phase. We are going through a selection process for a construction editor, this is the company would actually build the building for us, and also a separate process for an owner's recognition, make sure that our interests are represented. It's really critical to get both these folks on early in the process because we really want them to collaborate through starting in design. Interviews for both those positions are next Thursday, so I would say in the next month or so, we should have those things very well in hand. The property itself is actually formally listed. It's out there and available in the marketplace. Signs have gone up and I'm pleased to say that there's been a fair amount of interest. Actually, I had received a formal offer that was surprisingly low, but nonetheless, that's part of the, part of the process. But there's, every day there's inquiries and we're, my goal is to have at least a showing a week, get some hearts to it. The master campus plan is something members of the council had heard probably a year ago. We had to kind of break that into two pieces, really driven by the public safety building process that was going full tilt. So we focused on essentially the campus from where we're sitting towards Sawyer Road first and completed that. We've now dropped back to include the rest of the campus and our landscape architecture firm has come up with some really interesting concepts in terms of what the development potential that exists. The big moving question is really whether the school department is interested in going forward with a consolidated K-2 school or pre-K-2 school. Just the sheer size of the school to accommodate that many students is a real big consideration. So right now, that's included in the concept plans, but we really need the school to make some maybe final decisions in terms of what the preference is. We expect and would like to make a presentation of this in the coming months to the council and all, with the council chair for a workshop.
Excellent.
This is kind of a detail, but I think you might like to know, workers' comp insurance is a huge cost to us, given the number of employees and the type, the nature of their work. We expect that we're going to have savings, about $60,000 this year, based on the fact that our experience modification has gone from a one, which, which simply means that we're going to, our experience will be average, what someone else would be, down to a 0.5. So we're 15% better and that translates obviously into real dollars. So I applaud my staff for their commitment to safety and safety committees. to safety and safety committees. That's exactly how it works in the evidence. Along the lines of workshops, Councilor Donovan and I have been working and fielding all sorts of inquiries over the next couple of months. We pretty much have it booked, so you can expect workshops, local reach council meeting. We hope that format works for you. You've got the night scheduled out and trying to be efficient with your time. So, I'll do a quick rundown. At your next meeting, we'll be meeting with the folks in the Crossroads Development, Scarborough Downs. Following that will be my evaluation, I believe, the executive session. And then in March, we have a stormwater workshop, which I'm sure we're all waiting with bated breath. It's part of the annual training, but there also is some details on some of the detailed watershed planning efforts that we've undertaken. And lastly, first meeting in April, we have booked in the library trustees. Lastly, I just want to foreshadow a matter that perhaps some of you have heard from Councilor Donovan on. This is the potential opportunity, I'll pitch it as, for conducting a commercial industrial revaluation. And I characterize it as an opportunity because this is something that has been, in my mind, really since our defeat at the polls back in two thousand and fourteen. I can't believe it's been that long, frankly. But I've been unwilling and frankly unable to advance, seriously advance this idea. The need certainly has not gone away. It's only gotten worse. But frankly, only until recently, the last couple of months, that I had the sort of stability and leadership in the assessing office to feel comfortable to even explore this. I didn't want to move it forward without the sort of background support to make it successful. And so, I really wanted to test the marketplace. So, I, with no commitments, I put an RFP out and I was pleased that two respondents, all of my respondents responded. And I was really surprised that they could actually do it in time for the next commitment. And that's, that's how I pitch it as an opportunity. It is a bit out of cycling. You could certainly wait to the budget cycle, but I put in front of you, and I think I'd be remiss not to make you aware of the opportunity to move at least part of this forward. And you might ask, you know, I guess the other part of that, in terms of why now, is we, again, were, the need was confirmed through our annual analysis of sales to assessment ratios. And as has been the trend, commercial industrial is actually looking at seventy-six percent of average at this point, or the average is seventy-six percent of value. So, as a class of properties, it's by far the worst. So, that's the other reason why we're kind of focusing on this. And just to put finer point to that, by my calculations, that could be in the order of one hundred and seventy-five million dollars of unrealized value that, that does actually exist, but we're not showing it. And that's certainly meaningful. This could be considered as kind of the first phase to restoring equity back into the system. And clearly, this would be predicated, this would, this would come before the residential component, which would need to follow almost immediately thereafter. I have full intentions of putting in a funding request in the FY nineteen budget to complete the residential piece. It'll be a matter of discussion among you. But I'd like to advance the opportunity as soon as your next meeting to at least consider this option. And what I'd be asking for is the resources to be able, to be able to do this out of budget cycle. So, I know I'm hitting you with a lot of information. I do have a memorandum I'm working on and I expect to have that out in your hands by the end of the week. So, I'm not sure if this is the right forum to take questions on that, or I'm pleased to talk to you individually as well.
So, my question is just, you made reference to a defeat in the polls in two thousand and fourteen. Could you elaborate on that?
We put a townwide evaluation question, referendum question to the voters. And I don't remember the vote tally, but it was fairly soundly defeated, as I recall. Now, admittedly, in hindsight, we did know kind of public relations around the matter and I guess, not surprisingly, there's a lot of folks, there's a lot of mystery associated with assessments. And the general rule of thumb is a third go up, a third stay the same, a third go down, actually. But for whatever reason, the voters did not want to advance that.
Okay. Other questions? The Town Manager?
Not really a question. I can just add, because, you know, sometimes the information is going to be, so, keep in mind that when that was posted and sent out, the reason why it was sent out is because of the cost and the source of funding was bonding. It wasn't whether or not we needed to do it, it's whether or not we wanted to spend four hundred thousand dollars in a bond rather than operational cash. Because we didn't have to go to the voters if we did, if we funded it by cash. It was only because we needed to bond it.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you. And then for certain sectors, in this one in particular, we're reaching kind of this tax territory threshold where we must do it. And that's seventy percent. So, I think that's in our future. We'll do something sooner.
And when was the last time it was done?
Two thousand and four, I believe.
Long time. Other questions for the Town Manager? Counselor comments. Channel, start down with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. First, we haven't met in a long time. So, a couple of issues that have kind of been surfacing. So, I wanted to congratulate Crossroads Development and the Respair family and the Micho family and the whole Scarborough Downs. And I think it's extremely exciting. For many, many years, we've always kind of wondered what was going to happen and where would we go. And so, I think this is going to be an exciting journey about the growth and the future of Scarborough. It's going to be very interesting. So, and it's nice to see, not that other investors or other buyers wouldn't have been welcome, but it's nice to see two local families come together and to, you know, to invest back into the community, although they have always invested back into the community. Wanted to also mention, if you didn't see in the Portland Press Herald, Scarborough's own Owen Gerard, if I pronounced that correctly, was the two thousand and seventeen Fittzie Award winner for Maine High School football player. So, he is obviously the first from Scarborough, but he's also one of the first from a smaller school than some of the bigger schools that have been represented in the past. So, I wanted to congratulate him because that's pretty exciting. I worked with a young man from Sanford who was a nominee many years ago and he said, holding that, the Fittzie Award, it's like seventy-five pounds. I mean, it's just this monstrous thing that you just feel a lot of pride just to being able to hold. So, congratulations to him and to the school and to his team because it's, it's really representative of the whole community. And then last, I wanted to mention with the notice of the Eastern Trail Alliance and filling in the gap, and I don't know the date. I was trying to get onto Facebook through here, but I don't have it on here because I knew if I checked O'Reilly's Cure's Facebook page, it would be there. But I think what a, what a great way to celebrate that success by having more people sign up for the John Andrews Memorial ATA five K race that is sponsored by O'Reilly's Cure. Patrick and Sue O'Reilly started it last year. I want to say they raised almost a hundred thousand dollars last year. So, while they may have, may not need the money to fill the gap, I hope that they continue that tradition. John was actually a long, long time supporter of the Eastern Trail. He was a Scarborough resident, lives over in Hillside, or, I'm sorry, Hillcrest. An incredible person, if you ever had a chance to meet him. So, you know, maybe it's something, I might not be able to run a five K, but I'd love to join and walk with anybody else. Or, you know, maybe get pushed along in a, in a car or something, but we'll figure something out. But I think it would be a really nice kudos for this community to come together for that. Last year, I think it was May twentieth or May nineteenth, somewhere around there. So, maybe it's the same this year. And with that, I just want to ask everyone to keep safe and warm during this snowy weather.
Thank you. Will?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Katie. So, most of you know, I bought a new home in November and I am new to the world of propane heating. Never had propane heating before. And so, unbeknownst to me, I was unaware of how that works and how you could only, the tanks were rented and you could only get fuel through that one service provider. So, I was one of thousands of folks out there who have been, who paid for fuel well over a month ago, but was waiting and waiting and waiting. And did finally get my fuel delivery today, but I did want to just thank some of our local legislators because they were very responsive to our inquiries and like, how do, what can we do? I know Representative Sirocky reached out to the Energy Commissioner right away and got a response. And so, working, you know, I think across aisle and it was not a, you know, it was a very bipartisan issue. Everybody needs to be warm. And they were very, they moved swiftly to enact some legislation to be able to allow fuel companies to, you know, if they're, had the capacity to be able to deliver fuel to people with some waivers. So, I thought that was a, I think it was a little scary to me that it took so long for something like that to be able to happen. And hopefully, that will have everybody putting their heads together. But I definitely appreciated the effort and hope that if those of you are out there still waiting, that you do get fuel soon and know that those waivers are now in place, I believe. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Peter.
The only thing I wanted to do was to thank Tom and Julie for doing the listen to learns. I've heard a lot of really positive feedback from constituents regarding it, regarding the format. And I was able to attend the one yesterday. I was a little late, but yeah, it, I think the format works really well. So, thank you for the time. I know it was a lot of time out of your day and Julie's to do that. Also, I've had to mention, I'm going to Augusta tomorrow for legislative policy committee meeting for Maine Municipal. So, I will be reporting back on that. You may or may not be aware that in the second part of the regular sessions, there allegedly just emergency bills or funding bills that come forward. So, there aren't any many bills, but the big hot topic is marijuana. So, I will have more information for all of you as to where that seems to be heading because we do need to do some work on whatever comes out of there in ordinance. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing to say?
So, I just wanted to reiterate and thank my fellow counselors for the retreat that we had. I thought it was very productive and very well spent. I also wanted to comment, if any of you have had it yet this year, the flu is nasty. I had it last week, but it's not too late for others out there. If you haven't had it, if you're in the risk category, get a shot because it's brutal. It is brutal. So, that's all. I've been reading in the papers, it's record, record outbreaks across the country and the weather's not helping. So, there's a lot of vulnerable people at risk. So, I would encourage you, if you get the opportunity, to get a shot because it beats the alternative.
I stopped by Walgreens the other day because they give them...
They're all free?
Yeah, for free. So, I had mentioned that I had done a bit of a audit of the Senior Property Tax Relief Program and I just did want to report to all of you on, on that. I spent a few hours checking each of the applications that have been submitted, a little over three hundred, for the income levels because I wanted to make sure that we were actually serving the community that we were seeking to serve. Two-thirds of those who were receiving this aid were under thirty thousand dollars. So, that was a very encouraging, ninety percent of them were under forty thousand dollars. So, it was, we were serving the people who would benefit from this. Tom and I met with Sue Russo to debrief the Assembly Department's experience. We did identify that a small number of people who did not qualify were not qualifying under unusual circumstances. And this was that they were owners in one of our three mobile home parks and that they involve, and it involved a hybrid tax situation where the property owner of the mobile home received a tax bill for the value, based on the value of the structure, but that they had an underlying land lease for which they were paying, a payment to the owner of the land, the operator of the park. Tom Manager and I talked it over. We considered this to be an appropriate circumstance for interpreting our ordinance as cover of this and that that would be something that we would like to see happen. I think the ordinance committee is going to look at that to perhaps make it even clearer. So, I think it will, it will give us a chance to, along with our goals that we talked about today of helping seniors and Senior Property Tax Relief Program, certainly, there's, there's an instance. And we'll see what happens to, to it next year, what kind of impact it has. But it, it was a positive development to do the work. I did want to just, just for the benefit of the public, I've been refraining from really speaking to the property tax appeal by a large group of appellant at three beach communities, but it's out there. It's a lot of money. This is a case where they believed they were overesticed. The case went to trial. The town won, went to the Supreme Court. The town's position was upheld. You would think that would be the end of it, but there was unrelated issues that didn't involve any of the properties of the appealing parties that has lingered on. And I will save you the gory details of that. Suffice, suffice it to say, it is a complex, as exceedingly complex area of constitutional law, as you will probably have a color for us, and, and made for a difficult situation. In any event, the parties, the town and the plaintiffs, have agreed to return to mediation. We will be before the same mediator as we were before, and this is scheduled to resume on March the fifth. So, more to come later this winter. On that, I was glad that the Town Manager was able to report on the partial reval. This is an unusually low percentage that commercial industrial has fit. By focusing on just that, I think we can have it done for, that's what the contract commitment is, the people who have responded to the RFP has said, they can meet our commitment date in August so as to allow it to be a part of this. To me, it's an equity issue. It's clear that the town's residential side has carried a disproportionate portion of the burden in recent years. And here's now an opportunity in a two-step phase to get the commercial in this year and the residential next year. It's overdue. I was attending the listening sessions. I thought they were, I've attended all of our budget forums and, and I didn't think that there was a good give and take. We had a lot of municipal people there, but the discussion never seemed to have the kind of comfort and responsiveness that I thought was necessary for a topic as important as the budget. Well, these sessions were both terrific. It was intimate. There was twenty-five, thirty people in the room. They were, it was a small space. They were given the opportunity to follow-up questions. The answers were very direct. Julie and Tom were, were very responsive. And I think we have found a way to be able to reach out. It may actually be applicable to more circumstances than just the budget. Certainly, the questions were further afield than just the budget. On the, and my, the last point, I was so glad that Sean brought up the Fitzpatrick Trophy for Owen Gerard. And I found the article in the newspaper, in the Portland Press Herald this week on it. It was very refreshing because the first thing he thanked was his offensive line. I thought that was, anyone who's ever...
As a former running back yourself.
Anyone who's ever had a running back, those are the people you love. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. The move?
Second.
All in favor?